Why don't you just start off, tell voters who you are and what got you into politics?
My name is Sandra McPherson, city councilwoman at large. I was appointed to council in 2020. What got me into politics probably early on. My dad was a UAW Local 12 member. He worked for Kaiser Jeep back then. And I remember when the schools went on strike. And when they went on strike, we were up getting ready to go to school. And my dad said, you are not going to school. And we was like, yay. What? And he says, you will never cross a picket line. That was my first introduction to politics. And so then I started watching the TV to see what was going on and how that goes. And so that kind of stuck with me. And then through the years, when I turned 18, he's got to go register. Go register and then I voted every year after that. Know what you're voting for. As I got employed with Toledo Public Schools, signed a union card and started going to union meetings as a peer professional with Toledo Federation of Teachers. And then it was on, you know, I started going to the meetings. I started helping out on campaigns, you know, started supporting candidates, understanding the issues. And I can't, that was, I think that was the turning point really. Then 2020 came and this opportunity, it was okay. They knew I was interested. So when 2020 came, I put my hat in again. Judge Jack Puffenberger, he appointed me and it was a great day. And after 2020, I had to run in 2021.
Okay, yeah.
First campaign. And so I ran in 2021 and I think I was number three out of the six that were elected. So then it was work and I'm good.
Then you're on council?
I'm on council, yes. And the work begins.
There's a few different other appointees that have a similar path. What was it like to get started into politics and to have that responsibility?
It was, it was a lot because you can't learn. There's not like a training day for council. You know, you go in, I was blessed to had, had a wonderful legislative aide. Ricky Veer was very knowledgeable. And he had been there eight years. He had also worked for other political people in other cities. So he was very helpful to me in understanding my job and what I was to be doing. And also the clerk. And so it was a day to day really. Because you know, you get sworn in and you go straight up, straight up to the chair and you know, and they start reading off legislation. And it's like, whoa, you know, there's no.
It goes pretty quick.
It goes, it goes real quick, you know? And when I got, when I was first appointed, they were doing this hundred million dollar project, changing the meters, the water meters.
Yeah, yeah.
In residents' homes. And you know, I was like, I can't vote on this. I just got here. I don't have enough information. So come on, brief me up, everybody. And when they were telling me about it, it was a lot. Because it was affecting the constituents, but the constituents had no input on it. Well, they came back to me and they said, well, Local 500 is going to be a part of this project. And I said, well, that's good. Now, now, now you're talking, I talk, I know Local 500. Now you're talking to a union that's going to have some jobs. And I said, okay, I'm, I'm good with that. Once you show me the contract where you're signed, where they are in, and I'm good. Well, they never showed that to me. So when it came time to vote, I voted no. And they were all surprised. And I said, well, Local 500 is not a part of this project. I have a problem with that. Because it was almost like he was throwing me a bone that would get, that would get me to go along with this. And so I didn't. And I thought that they were, they were moving too fast. And I felt like they were moving fast on this project because they had four new council members that had just got on council.
How did that vote go?
It passed.
Yeah.
And they started putting in new meters. And then Johnson Control got the project. And I'm gonna leave that at that. You can look at it for yourself. Later on down the line, we started having problems with curb stops in front of people's houses breaking. And we started having problems with people not letting them in the home to change the meters. I can go back and I say, okay, how are we introducing this to the citizens? Are we going out? Are we having community meetings? Are we showing them? And so then they did a video to show people, you know, you could check it for yourself and that kind of thing. Well, that was good. But then we still needed to get out there to let people know. Cause you just ain't gonna let anybody in your house. And then people were leery of it anyway. And so then the next step was, okay, well, we need to go out. And so they started sending people from the water department out to the houses and asking them, you know, can they, can they check to see whether or not their lid or whatever and that kind of thing. And they were going out. And then these waters, and then I got a couple of calls from residents. Said that they got a letter, the curb stop was broke and they have to pay for it. And they have 10 days to get a contractor and then they have to show that they are working on it. And it's like anywhere from 1,800 to $3,000. I went to the mayor and the deputy mayor and I said, we can't charge these people for something that we didn't even allow them to have no input on. This is not something that they wanted, but you're going to charge them because our people or your people, Johnson Control, are going out here and breaking these curb stops because they don't know and they're old. So we had that money from ARPA dollars. And I said, so what we need to, what we need to do is I'll put forth legislation where if they go out and the curb stop is broke, the city will pay for it and the citizen would not have to incur that cost. Mayor agreed, I put forth and council approved that piece of legislation, which was a big piece of legislation because that was a lot of dollars. You know, and you're talking people, you know, 1,800 to $3,000 per household. That's a lot of money, especially when I didn't want this or I didn't get to vote on this. So that was a, that was a big thing for me at that time.
What does it mean for you to, I guess, be a representative and do your due diligence in that kind of a way where you are? It seems like you're work, you're working for, for the everyman.
I'm working for the people because I was elected by the people. So I am their voice. I'm their agent.
Yeah.
So when I make a decision or when I vote, I'm not voting based on me. I'm voting based on my constituents and their needs. Will it benefit them? Will it improve their life longevity? Will it improve where they live? Will it improve their children? Whether it's on a legislation piece on widening a street or fixing a curb or building an apartment complex, whatever it is, I have to look at it not from my eye view, but from the constituents' eye view. Because I work for them. I don't work for me. And that's what I keep in mind all the time that I, and I tell them all the time, wherever I go, I work for you. So I need to hear from you. I need to hear your thoughts. And sometimes we may not all agree. And there was one, the apartment complex at Southland, the Glenns, where the citizens out there did not want it. And I had to say to them, we need it. We are suffering from a housing shortage. So here's land that we can produce places for people to live. I cannot in, in my right mind, vote no on this. And that was a tough one because they were looking at their properties and their taxes and where they live and what it would bring to that area. They weren't looking at what benefits that would bring to the area, to other people. And sometimes that's where we gotta come out of. We gotta come out of us and think about others. You know, last night we had the forum for, about housing. And they were talking about all the issues. But I have to look at what, what we've done and what we're doing to, to bring that down. Because I mean, we can talk about all that, you know, a candidate can say all that they're going to do when they get on council. They're going to go for this. The reality is you cannot go, you can go for it. But the reality is you've got to have seven other council members that will go with you. You can't go by yourself. So it's a team effort. Because when you come up with these ideas, you got to share with the rest of your council members. And if they don't agree, it's not going anywhere. You have to talk to your administration, up under governing and see what's the thoughts. So it's not all that, you know, I listen and say, well, it's not that easy. Cause if it was that easy, you'd get on council and change the world. We, we have, we have a lot more people that want to get on council, you know? So it's different. It's very complex as an at-large council person. And I just think that when I make a decision or when I vote on something, I'm thinking about everybody and how it's going to affect them.
What, what are the main things that you would like to accomplish in your next term if you are elected?
Reinvesting in our neighborhoods and we're working diligently right now. I want to continue that work because I see a growth and I see a window where it's going to change. Because we are cleaning up a lot of the blight and we're tearing down a lot of the houses. But the other piece of that is restoring houses that can be restored. And I believe that we can and I see it. And I told them last night, just on my block, there were three houses that had been sitting empty. And now people have come in and they're restoring them. And one of them just sold. So there is a restoration move going on. We've got to be a little bit more strategic and a little more pushy on that parts too. I think we missed the mark about ways that we can save some homes in, in our different areas. And they are salvageable. So then we need to put forth that effort along with Land Bank that, that takes those houses. Make it more, a little easier for persons that want to turn a house around and maybe flip a house a little, a little easier in the paperwork and the finance part. And I'll give you a prime example. I wanted to buy the house down the street from me. My understanding is with, with the Land Bank, when you apply for that, you have to show that money in your bank account of the cost of the renovating of that house. Well, that house was a $35,000 renovation. I did not have $35,000 sitting in my account. Nor in, in thinking about going out and taking a loan for $35,000 to put in that house when the house is not valued at $35,000.
Yeah.
That's a piece that we have to look at. So, but if, and then they give you a time slot that this has to be done. But if you can help me or, or I don't want to say fund me, but assist me in doing this and maybe navigating me through the process. I think that would be beneficial for a lot of the houses and a lot of people that really would probably jump in and save a house. The other thing that we're looking at in reinvesting in our neighborhoods is a piece of legislation through zoning that came through about being able to build a smaller house on land that you have bought that's adjacent to your house.
Yeah.
So, prime example, I have two lots next to my house. My plan was to build a house for my mom and my aunt to live there. They both passed before I could finish getting the layout. But now with this, this comes into action. We can do this easier for families that are trying to keep their parents in their homes, that can build something next to them and not have the, the language of you got to have so many feet here, so many feet there, that kind of thing. You know what I'm saying?
So if I'm understanding you right, just kind of pulling back some of the regulations, some of the regulations that are required to set up new housing. And also I understand the Land Bank requires essentially a beginning to end plan that, that you have to have all your funds, but also have kind of a timeline for renovating the house that it'll be up to code and all these different things in order to, to move forward with that house.
And a lot of times realtors buy these homes and they have that. But what about the average person that would love to do it? My, my ideal of doing it, I wanted to do that and then rent the house to a family that would want to buy a house but couldn't. You would have to go to Home Depot and learn how to take care of a home. Like if the screen breaks, you know, you would cut the grass, you would shovel the snow, all of that. And if you did all of that and completed everything that we lined out in this contract for five years, you would then, I'd sign the house over to you.
Sort of like a grassroots habitat for humanity.
Yes. Yes. That's what I would like to see happen here. And we can do programs like that. And so when we talking about these smaller houses, they're not as, they're not as costly too. So, and then when you go to renovate a home, you know, that you can grab up for five, 10, $15,000, when you can renovate a home in taking your time and putting your money together, the average person like me, I believe I could do it, but it would take me longer. It would take me more than a year because I would have to do one room, save up, do another room. Do one room, max out a credit card, do another room. Because that's the reality. But if we could do that, I believe that we could salvage some of these homes. I think it can be done. I just believe that it can be done and those that we can salvage. But now we need to go back and look at those that we can salvage. And, and, and we've got apartments coming up. That's why I said, it's not all doom and gloom. We got the Glenns coming up. We got the Grants coming up. We just opened the Lofts at Central in Upton, which is fabulous. You know, so we are going in the right direction. We've just been kind of slow in doing it. And I believe that it's both council and the administration has got to get in the groove of, we've got to push this harder and we've got to move harder on this. Because council can't do it without the work of the administration. Remember, council is legislation. Council makes legislation, signs it off, and then the mayor enacts it. You know what I'm saying? That's, that's, that's how that goes, so.
Yeah, it's, it's a kind of a two-way street. And then what is, what is the incentive for people to come to Toledo, to invest in Toledo?
That's an excellent question. And we've got to start incentivizing. I'm glad you asked that because I've thought about that through the night. We've got to incentivize developers, not just developers that would build, but also manufacturers, small businesses. We've got to be strategic and we've got to go for it right now. Because in all the magazines, it's saying Toledo is affordable place to live. Toledo is affordable place to live. Only thing that's happening with that is LLCs are coming in and buying up the houses. That's, that's all that, that's all that has done for us. And that's not good. Because if they were buying them up and actually being good stewards of it, they wouldn't be raising their rents triple of what our average renter is paying. So the, that's not good. To incentivize is developers that can come in and, 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 and build condos, that can build side by sides. Because houses are expensive right now to build. And in the areas where, where we could build them, you can't put a $250,000 house next to a $35,000 house. It's not a, it's not going to work because they're not going to come in and pay $250,000 for it. But what we can do is we can build condos. We can build twinplexes. We can build quads. And you know, in DC, you know, those row houses, you own those.
Yeah.
In New York, those apartments, you own your apartment. We can do the same thing in the city of Toledo. We just got to get creative in thinking how we can redo this. Because Toledo is a great place to live. And our Toledo Public School Systems, we're growing. I was, I was so proud to hear that the numbers have increased at Scott High School. Scott High School is the best kept secret in the city of Toledo. I'm, I'm on the up because I worked there. But when I went in there, I had no idea of what was going on in there. And when I saw those teachers and administrators humping and talking to the kids and out in the hall, high fiving, that's relationships. And that's what people and kids are seeing in that school, relationships. Now this great grandiose about putting these phones away finally, I'm hearing it. Kids are in the hallways talking to one another. Kids are in the cafeteria talking to one another. They're not distractions in the classroom. This is great. Now we got some learning going on. So the incentivizers, some of them about coming to Toledo? Scott Park campus. You, you want to come and let your kid go to school where they will be learning how to be a firefighter before they get to 21? Well, they'll be learning how to be a police officer. Well, they'll be learning engineering. All of these things that build a better city. You're always going to need a plumber, electrician and a contractor. Nowhere, no, everywhere, you're going to need those. And those are the kind of classes that are going to be at Scott Park. That's an incentive to move to Toledo, to raise your kids. The other part of that is we've got to have places for them to come and live in the city of Toledo. So we've got to get, we've got to get serious about this thing. And I tell everybody, it starts at the top. Doesn't start down here. You ain't seen nothing ever started at the bottom. It always starts at the top. And when the top blooms and gets to moving, he moves the rest of the pieces. So housing and neighborhoods are on it. Ross Clemmons, for the last two years, has done the housing, home incentive buyer resource over at Scott High School. It was amazing because people got to come in and talk with bankers as to what you need to do, how you need to start saving up, get your credit score in order. What do you need to do to prepare to buy a house? How much house can you afford? That kind of thing. All of those things were going on throughout that Saturday. And they've done it for the last two years. It's amazing. They had, I bet you over a thousand people coming to Scott High School, learning. And that helps a person dream. Because a lot of times you don't think you can buy a house. You don't think that it's even in your trajectory. But to go in here and talk to bankers and get the resources and, and it may not happen right now. But if you do this, 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 and this, it can happen for you. And what I so, I was so excited was last year and a girl was on Channel 11 News and she said, I'm a first time home buyer.
That's awesome.
That's awesome. And it was because of that, that fair that the Housing, Neighborhoods and Housing's Director Clemmons put on. That's what we have to do. People have to dream again. There's a lot of hopelessness and feeling helpless in the city of Toledo. We've got to give them some hope. And, but we've got to start doing it with one another too. And that's what, last night I said, yeah, it's, it's, it can be bad. But let me give you some things that Toledo has done. We, we have Dana's House now that we didn't have before. A transitional house for young people that are dealing with mental health. See, they were going to the hospital, getting treated and being kicked out. Oh, they got to transition so that they can get strong and so that they can understand what they're dealing with. And yes, you need to take your meds. And yes, we have others that look like you that are doing it too. And we're living together and we're building one another up. We have Dana's House now because her parents lost her. And so we have Dana's House right over there on Arlington. We also just opened up down here by the train station, the apartments for young people that were transitioning out of the system. And they're going out on the street. They're homeless. Now they're in an apartment. They can get the resources. They can get reconnected, get a job and feel some hope and that somebody cares. We are working on it, small pieces, but we're working on it. And when we help those, then they'll reach back and help somebody else. It's only a beginning, but we're working on it. And so I tell people, don't give up the dream. Toledo is the best place that you can live, raise your kids and have fun. Look at downtown Toledo. When that cruise ship came in, Toledo has a cruise ship that came in. I even met a couple on that cruise ship. They were first from St. Louis. It's a seven day cruise. They came in Toledo and they were amazed at just walking around the Glass City Metro Park. And then the bus took them to Ford Henry Museum. Then they went to the Toledo Art Museum and the Toledo Zoo. They were first from St. Louis, had never been to Toledo before. And they said, whoa, I've got to come back here. And we, you know, and then they were there and I told them we had just had finished with a jazz fest. They said, you have a jazz fest down? Yes. And it's free. They were like, wow, we missed it because the ship had just come in.
And you were instrumental in starting the jazz fest.
Yes, yes. That was a dream. Just looking at that park and seeing that area. And I said, boy, that would be a great place to have a festival. And my dad was a jazz enthusiast. And I went to a jazz fest over at the. And I went to a jazz fest over at the Ottawa, Ottawa Park Amphitheater. And I said, I need to get with that guy. His name was Hugh Ross. And I was talking to his brother, Tim Ross. I said, Tim, I need to get with that guy. And he knows his brother at the time. I said, Tim, I need to get with that guy. And he said, that's my brother. So I need to sit down and have a conversation with him. And we put on our first jazz fest. And next year will be our fifth anniversary of our jazz fest and we're going two days. And it's been amazing. And every year, the numbers have gone up. It's free. And it's with the thanks of the city of Toledo and Lucas County Commissioners. And then we have several sponsors, but I wanna keep it free for the citizens of Toledo and the surrounding areas. If Monroe, Michigan, small as they are, can do a free jazz. If Trenton can do free jazz, why can't the city of Toledo do it? We are bigger and better when we work together.
That's awesome. But I do have one more question. How do we get companies? How do we get jobs? How do we get more companies to, to invest into the Glass City?
Excellent question. I'm glad you asked. My understanding is developers do not wanna come in on properties where they have to clean it up in order to get it to build. Dolder Jarvis, where Dolder Jarvis Factory is one example. The Champion Plant over off in Nebraska, another example. Well, what is happening right now is we have with the investments and the money that with this piece of legislation that just passed, they're able to go in and clean those areas up. And then the next piece is to go out seeking developers to come in and build on those sites, whether it's a small factory. We need, we need jobs. We need to employ people that are in the city of Toledo. In the same token, we've gotta house the people that are in Toledo. And if we build small factories, employ two, three hundred people, if they're not citizens of Toledo, they're coming in, where are they gonna live? So while we're working on that, we've also gotta be working on that part. So it's coming. And we're working on it. And that's why I gotta stay on council. To make sure that boots stay on the ground, that we keep pressing toward this. And I gotta give it, Brandon Seehorse is doing a great job, as you can see with the Spitzer Building. They're clearing out the Spitzer Building. That's gonna be apartments in the Spitzer Building. It's gonna be fabulous when it's finished. That's gonna be another place where people can live. Because just like when we brought in the first Amazon, we had to have places for them to live. And a lot of them live over in the loft, across the river. So, and we wanna keep them in Toledo. Sorry, but we don't wanna move into Perry's Word and mommy. Sorry. Because we don't, we don't get any revenue from that, only just from them working. We want them to live in the city of Toledo. And so when we move to do these, and I, I do believe we're on the right track. Because once we get a lot of these houses and old factories cleared out, then we can go out and say, hey, you got this spot right here. Would be perfect for your paint company. Or would be perfect for your mattress company or, you know, you got a small business? Come on, let's invest in here. And then I would like for us to reach out to smaller businesses. Those businesses that started during COVID. Let's find them some temporary smaller places to rent so that they can grow, almost like planting the seed of small businesses to see them develop and grow into bigger businesses. That's what we should be about. We should be helping to make their dream a reality. I, I believe that we can. We just gotta work together and we gotta think out the box. This is a time of creativity. We gotta get creative. And we have a lot of spaces downtown that I'm seeing that are just vacant. You know, they're historical. Yes, they got a lot going on. Yes, takes dollars and all of that. But we've gotta be creative. Let's, let's, let's get creative and start putting some businesses up. I think we can.
Thank you, Ms. Sandra. Ms. Sandra McPherson for Councilwoman at Large.